Welcome to the March 25th Board of Trustees Meeting for the Board of Library Trustees, aka BOLT, right, the Board of Library Trustees. We will start with a roll call. And can you help us out there?
Absolutely.
Since I guess I can't call my own name?
Yeah, I guess not. We'll start with Trustee Petty.
Here.
Trustee Joshi.
Present.
Trustee Felges.
Present.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Here.
And Chair Moreau.
Here.
Great, we have everyone here.
Welcome, everybody. Our first item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. And we have two sets of minutes and an appropriation of funds. There was one small correction on the second set of minutes, right? Which was the date of the meeting, which said February 18th, it should have said March 18th. But with that small change, would someone like to move the consent calendar? Or does anybody want to?
Move, I'll go ahead and move if we approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Okay, I think we need to vote on the consent agenda.
Yes, we'll actually take public comment first and see, maybe explain the process by which people can participate in our Library Board of Trustees meeting today. If that's okay with you.
Sure.
All right. So there are a few ways to participate in Library Board of Trustees meetings. One is to join directly on Zoom Gov using the Zoom app. The other is to join by calling into the meeting by telephone. To join on Zoom, you can use the link or the phone number on the agenda. That's located at isearchmonterey.org. And since the meeting has already started, you'll find this under the recent tab. To join us by telephone today, you can dial toll-free 833-568-8864 and then enter the meeting ID. The meeting ID for today's meeting is 1603013357. And then you'll hit pound. After that, if you're prompted to enter a participant ID, you can press pound one more time. Detail instructions on how to access all of our public meetings here in the city of Monterey are available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. When you are making a public comment using the Zoom app, please virtually raise your hand using the raised hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you've dialed in by phone, you can raise your hand by dialing *9 and then unmute yourself again by dialing *6. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. I'll be calling on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. And please keep in mind that this meeting is also being streamed live on YouTube at youtube.com/cityofmonterey and on Comcast Channel 25. YouTube has a 10-second delay and Channel 25 has a 90-second delay for our meetings. So please take that into consideration. And as always, we look forward to receiving any public comment this afternoon. And having said that, since we were just about to take a vote on the consent calendar, we do not have any public comment on this item or on the consent items.
Okay, so can we call for a vote on that?
Yes, Chair Moreau.
I will, yes.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Felges.
Yes.
Trustee Joshi.
Yes.
And Trustee Petty.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, that is 5-0.
Okay, now, do we now take public comments? Pause for another moment on public comments on items not on the agenda. I think we need to do that.
Oh, yes, items not on the agenda. Let's see here, we do have open public comment for items not on the agenda. And I don't see any raised hands. So we can move on to new business, I believe, Chair Moreau.
Okay, so hearing no public comments, we will move on to new business. Which the first item is the quarterly report on museums and cultural arts division activities. Which was, I'll turn it over to Inga.
Thank you so much, Chair Moreau. So just as a reminder, back in July of 2019, the city manager asked the library board and the library director whether or not they were agreeable to the library director taking over responsibility for the city museums cultural arts division. And so the library board agreed to give that a try. And as part of that, library board asked that the museums and cultural arts manager, along with the library director, provide a quarterly report, just so they've got a sense of the kind of work that was involved and the sorts of accomplishments that were achieved in the museums and cultural arts division. So as of May, the museums and cultural arts staff were retired or laid off as part of the unfortunate situation with the economy. And but then in September, we were able to use some museums trust funds to bring back a 20-hour-per-week artifact specialist. So the activities within the division really picked up with that artifact specialist returning because that way I had somebody I could delegate some work to and we were able to accomplish more together. So I really appreciate Jordan Langer for his return. And this report reflects the work that he and I were able to do together. So first of all, we have the planning work that we've done. So our museums and cultural arts commission prioritized reopening of the museums. And to them, they really saw Colton Hall as a flagship museum for the city. So they wanted a reopening plan for Colton Hall. And Jordan drafted an operating plan for how we would reopen, how we would lay things out in a safe way using COVID-19 protocols. And so we have that draft plan ready to go when we are able to reopen. And then also during the quarter, there was a big accomplishment, which was the stables, which had been declared unsafe and unstable, were finally demolished. And that's a project that had been on the books since 2002. It takes a lot of steps because the Lower Presidio Historic Park is leased to the city from the army. And then it's also an architecturally sensitive site. So there are lots of steps to get anything removed from the site. But thankfully, all the paperwork had been done. And then our Public Works Director, Steve Woodtree, saw an opportunity when some roadwork was being done. And so all different sorts of folks were on site anyway to do the demolition as well. And is my microphone very problematic? Okay, what if I don't use the microphones that member?
Sounds like you're underwater.
Yeah. What I might suggest, the feedback might be coming from, I'm not sure. It could be other members who are here. So maybe we'll try to mute everyone who's not speaking and then try that out.
Okay, so is that better now? Great, oh, good, okay. So the stables were demolished. And then looking at the Lower Presidio Historic Park master plan, the plan calls for rebuilding something that simulates those stables that can then be used as a community meeting space and as a space to do some historic demos and so forth. So now the Museums and Cultural Arts Commission and Jordan and I need to be sort of looking at that and seeing what our next steps are going to be. Of course, right now with the economic situation that the city is facing, this is not a time to be taking on any building projects as we've learned ourselves in the library. So but anyway, that, at least that step has been accomplished of removing the unsafe buildings. So then as far as tours are concerned, we are not doing actual tours. But we did some work with the Canary Row Days series of programs where we worked with our videographer Eric Palmer, the city's videographer, to videotape a tour of the Pacific Biological Lab that then we were able to put on our website so that people could still have that experience of being inside the lab and learning about the lab. And so we sort of took the opportunity to piggyback on a series of programs we were doing to create that video. And then we are also planning with Eric to do a series of little tours inside Colton Hall. But because Eric's full-time job is actually not videographer right now and because Jordan is only 20 hours a week, they haven't been able to quite pull that together, although we do have a script. So we're hoping that we're going to get that videotaped whether or not we are able to reopen before that takes place. It's just good to have on our website to help people learn about the Colton Hall and the significance of Colton Hall 24 hours a day. And so then we're really glad that the city has cellphone tours. The museums and the library went in on this quite a long time ago, 2012, creating a whole series of cellphone tours. And we worked with state historic parks as well. And those tours are, the numbers look really good. In fact, the numbers have been higher than in previous years and most likely because people are looking for things to do and they can take a tour of the city even though the facilities are closed. So we're really glad that the cellphone tours are up and running. As far as the art collection goes, I think our biggest accomplishment this past quarter was making arrangements for the loan of two very large pieces and important pieces of city artwork to our neighbor Monterey Museum of Art for a retrospective on Francis McComas. And Francis McComas, similar to Robinson Jeffers, had been a very well-known painter in his day. But as as time has gone by, fewer and fewer people have heard his name. So anyway, this was a wonderful opportunity to have a big retrospective. And so we loaned two large pieces. And we actually did physically relocate them, thinking that we didn't know when things might open up again. And at some point during the exhibit, it was possible that museums might reopen and then people could actually see them in person. But the Monterey Museum of Art has done a good job of virtual exhibiting. And so those pieces can be seen and information is available at the Monterey Museum of Art. And then I listed a bunch of the outreach kinds of activities that we normally do, the partnerships with others, that were usually part of Christmas in the Adobes and History Fest, we've been one of the big players in History Fest. Those were all, had to be postponed or paused this year. But we did a really great job with Canary Row Days. And I mentioned there, and I think you've heard me talk about it before because it really was a library effort, a museums effort. And we had over 300 participants from all across the country. And that sort of showcased some of the strengths of doing Zoom programming in that we had a much broader audience able to attend our programs than ever would have been possible had we only had the one-day event as we'd done the previous year. And finally, the Monterey Pacific Rotary were very generous in offering once again to decorate Colton Hall for the holidays. And I thought that that was a very nice gesture on their part and it sort of helped create a sense of normalcy in a very not-normal year to see Colton Hall lit up with its nice evergreen boughs and everything for the holidays. And then there, last but certainly not least, the Museums and Cultural Arts Commission. We only had one meeting during the quarter. But now we're back to monthly meetings and many, many subcommittee meetings as will be something that's familiar to all of you. And so they are going strong. And I'm happy to take any questions about the report. Bob, Trustee Petty, yes?
Okay, I have several things. Jordan is our archive specialist?
He's called an artifact specialist, so.
Okay, it says archive specialist in the report, that's why I was reading that.
Oh darn, I'm sorry, that was an error that it snuck in. I think in the last quarterly report and then we didn't get it corrected.
So what's the correct title for him, an archive specialist?
Artefacts specialist.
Well, my question related to that is, you know, he was brought back on to do that kind of work. Has he been able to do anything with maintaining the artifacts, since that's the right word, in the California History Room?
So.
And if not he, somebody else?
So that's not part of his purview, is the California History Room. So he maintains the artifacts for the museums. So he checks on the status of the dehumidifiers and so forth. And he, we had an exhibit on loan to the Lower Presidio Historic Park Museum. And he was able to package that stuff up and get it back to the donors. He does that sort of work with artifacts. So but as far as artifact work for our archives, the California History Room, we do have three volunteers who have returned. And two of them are working on the Rumpel collection. And so they're processing that collection. And another one has just simply been sort of an extra pair of hands for some projects that we're working on.
Okay, my second thing is, you were talking about the cellphone historic tour. But in the, and the phone tours, excuse me, have remained popular. And then in the middle of that paragraph, it says, "The website includes recordings, images, and maps." So is it a website tour or a telephone tour? Or are you talking about them looking on the little tiny telephone screen?
No, so it's a, it's a cellphone tour. And it has a simply audio component. But it also is compatible with smartphones. And so it has a website as well. And if people access the website, then they can see photographs and other kinds of images and text as well describing the site.
So if I'm sitting at home, or a visitor is sitting at home, they would use both their cellphone for the audio and the computer for the video? Couldn't they use the laptop or tablet or something for the audio as well?
Yeah, so if you're walking around and you come up to one of these brown posts that says, then there's a phone number you can dial and so you can listen as you're standing there. From home, you can also dial it. I tested it today to make sure it was working. But you can also go to the website and then learn about the sites there from your own tablet or smartphone, you know, wherever you are.
And would the person with the tablet or laptop computer, not using a phone, hear the same audio description of what they were seeing on the screen as if they were there with their cellphone?
Yes.
Okay, that was the part that threw me. I knew about the telephone one. If I'm walking around and I see a spot in the sidewalk and I stop and dial it up, I didn't understand, I wasn't aware of the website availability of it, you know, from home. On that same page, on, in fact, the page 13, the paragraph about the art collection referenced to the Francis McComas exhibit.
Yes.
It says that it opens January 21st and runs through April 4th, 2002.
Sorry.
Did it already ended like 2,000 years ago or what?
No, it should be 2021.
Okay, well, add a 1 there. It's the very last, very end of that paragraph about the art collection.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, when you started talking about this agenda item, you said we had unstable stables?
Yes.
Oh, okay, wanted to make sure that we point that out for the record. And where relative to the museum that's at the Lower Presidio, were those stables? I'm trying to visualize, you know, the hillside there.
Okay, so if you have, if you have started driving up as if you were going to go to the museum, correct? On that road, there's a sort of a big bend to the left. And right at that bend, the stables were to your right.
So the Bolio Road or the one on Artillery?
It's General Ewing.
Oh, okay, but the one that you come up like from the residential area, not off of Lighthouse?
No, so if you come off of Lighthouse, so first you make a left off of Lighthouse. And then you make a right to start heading towards the water again. And then the road makes a bend to the left. And now you're facing the museum.
So is it uphill or downhill from the museum?
Downhill from the museum.
Okay, okay, I often go there with a sack lunch and sit up by the Unipero Sarah statue and eat and watch, so down from there.
Well, let me know if you ever notice any nefarious activity when you're sitting in that spot. Because I've gotten three phone calls today, but it's the wind, we hope, regarding Father Sarah. And thank you for going there and sitting there and keeping an eye on him.
What's he been doing?
We're just, want to make sure he's protected.
Uh-oh, something happened.
There it is.
There we go.
Give us a picture of the stables.
Yes.
I'm trying to get oriented.
Okay, so see where that green teardrop is with sort of the tree in the middle? Oh yeah, and there, see where the cursor is circling?
Uh-huh.
That, those are the buildings that have come down.
Okay, oh yeah, okay, because and you see where the, there are three cars parked there, right down through Unipero Sarah? That's where I park and I walk up that hill toward the bottom of the screen.
Okay.
And, okay. Gotcha, thank you.
Since we're talking about the Lower Presidio Historic Park, please refer your friends who are coming to visit to Monterey to that park because it has a lot of significant artifacts and monuments on that site. And it's got a beautiful view and a great place to have a picnic. And so while our museums are still closed, it's still a great place and there are interpretive signs so people can get a sense of our history by visiting that site.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I think Trustee Joshi had his hand raised?
You mentioned about Christmas in the Adobes being postponed. Were you talking about year 2020 or 2021?
I was speaking about year 2020 because the quarter that I was reporting on was the second quarter, which was October through December.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just had another quick question. And that is, you were talking a little bit about reopening. With the staff that you have now, I'm assuming that's probably not possible?
Well, the interesting thing about the museums is they have, we have museum attendant positions for Colton Hall, which are hourly positions and that is in the budget this year. That wasn't removed from the budget. And so the, the, that funding is there and we do have some folks who would like to return, who are ready to return.
So that's in the reopening plan that, uh, that.
Correct, for this year. I don't know yet about budgeting for next year. And then, uh, Lower Presidio Historic Park, uh, that museum, the Presidio Museum is stopped by volunteers. And then the other museum is the Pacific Biological Lab. The tours that are led at the lab on, um, monthly on Saturdays had been led. Those were also led by volunteer docents.
Jim, got a question?
Uh, thank you, Inga, for a very nice report on, on that. Um, my only comment is more of a question, which is, uh, or a suggestion is it, it takes much staff time to put this report together? Given the limited staff, both in the museums and Cultural Arts Division and in the library, I would be open to having this report only every four months or six months if that would be helpful. If it's not a big deal to do it quarterly, then, then I'd like to continue it quarterly. But, uh, if, if it's a strain of any type, I would be fine with going to four or six months if other trustees feel the same way.
So we do do a monthly activity report. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. We do a monthly activity report for the Museum and Cultural Arts Commission. So it wasn't that hard to piece it together from, from that report. So, but, uh.
So maybe, yeah, we can continue it quarterly with the caveat that it not be, um, much beyond putting together the monthly activity report for the three months.
Thank you. Okay.
In fact, if I could just add to that, if it's easier just to provide us the three monthly reports once a quarter, I'd be fine with that too. I'm just trying to be respectful of the lack of staff.
That would be wonderful. We'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
That's fine. Okay, any other, any other comments, uh, questions on the report? Well, thank you, Inga, for a wonderful report. I think in that we need to take public comments.
Yes, and we do not have public comment on Inga's report.
Okay. So we will, we will move on to the next item, which is the report on the survey of comparable libraries from the Ad hoc Benchmarking Library Services and Cost Committee, which is the forewarning. Um, uh, that committee was, uh, composed of, uh, Jim and myself and Inga. And, um, I, I'll give you a brief overview and then hopefully Jim and Inga will chime in and, uh, then we'll take questions. So you have a report in your packet. The purpose of, uh, of doing this report was to get some sense of where we send vis a vis libraries, uh, in California that kind of look like us, so that we could, we could answer the questions. Are we spending more money? Do we have more staff? Uh, how do we rate according to them? So there is an annual, uh, like, a state of library survey that goes out to all the libraries in California. We had a lot of data, but it was for all the libraries in California and it just seemed to be a bit too much. So you will see in your packet, you, uh, as an appendix to this report, there are three, uh, spreadsheets. And one of them was, um, the state survey data, but it's only for seven cities, including Monterey. And so what we did in order to whittle it down, explains this in the report, is we looked for cities of comparable, um, size and budget and, uh, and whose libraries kind of look like ours. And we did explain that, I think in a previous meeting, we talked about how we chose our, our benchmark, uh, libraries. Uh, so we applied the, um, the library survey. Uh, we excerpted those cities, which you have, and not all the fields. I think there was something like 285 fields in the original survey. So we cut it down to the ones that we felt were relevant to us. Uh, and, uh, that's in your, in your packet. Uh, but it really, there were many, uh, questions we still had that weren't in that state library survey. So Inga did another survey, a small survey, where we asked questions like, "How do you staff your library? What does it look like?" And, uh, and while we were asking those questions, we threw in a couple like, um, "What is your pandemic plan? What are you doing during pandemics? Do you have a reopening plan? What is your org chart?" And so we gathered more information about those cities. And that you see in a, in a chart called the Monterey Public Library Survey Data. So that's a kind of ancillary, uh, set of data for the same cities. Uh, one of them didn't answer. They said they were just too busy during the pandemic and everybody was laid off. So we were down to six at that point. But we, Monterey is in there also as a comparison. And then, um, uh, Jim, uh, took a look at some of the city budgets and, uh, we, we began to realize that maybe, uh, budget wise, we were kind of comparing apples and oranges because some cities had, um, you know, water companies and of course we have, uh, the History Room and we have, um, uh, you know, we, we have things that they didn't have. They have things that we don't have. We have the sports center, we have the comfort center. So, uh, we asked them more detailed questions about their budgets, which you will see in the report called City Profiles. Um, and then we, we tried to put it all together and, um, uh, it, we see it as a planning tool. It's going to be particularly useful as, uh, as we continue to, to plan for the Monterey library so that we can see where we're in line, where out of line with other libraries. But there were a couple of, um, things that kind of jumped out at us. And they are in the summary of this, uh, of this, uh, of this report. You know, one of them is that, uh, our budget, um, our operating budget and our staff expenditures were pretty large compared to the other benchmark libraries. But, uh, part of that is because we have the bookmobile, we have the California History Room. And, and at that point, the fund development coordinator was in the budget because we're, we're using, uh, was it 2018, 2019 data? Uh, we're not using this anomalous, uh, year data. We're using the data before to try to, to try to do this for everybody. So, so, um, uh, we understand why our, our, our budget and staff expenditures were higher. Um, also, uh, we actually have more, the ratio, if you look in the data, to full-time, full-time to part-time staff was higher in Monterey than it was in the, the other libraries. So we did talk about that. We also have a large number of non-resident cardholders, you'll notice, but so do the other libraries as well. Some of them have more than, more than we do proportionately. And, um, uh, none of the libraries charge non-resident fees, uh, for their, uh, for their non-residents. Um, and I, we quoted under the California Library Services Act that the state of California is trying to, um, promote equity among communities so that people from one community can use the library in another community without having to pay if their library didn't, doesn't have what they, what they need. Um, we also noticed that our, our clientele is very active. Our circulation is very high, um, compared to the other libraries. And we, yet we spend less on our collection than many of the other libraries too. So I thought that was kind of interesting. And not surprisingly, our physical space was the smallest of all the other libraries per capita. Um, and we know that and the feasibility study pointed that out too, I believe. Um, so, uh, I invite you to, at your leisure, there are many, many pages of this, of this spreadsheet. And I invite you to peruse the data at, at your, uh, at your leisure and see some very, very interesting things that you can find in this data. Some of it, eh, eh, you know, we, we ponder what it all means. Some of it may not mean so much. Uh, we, one of the things we discovered, for example, is that the, the budget data that the city sent was so, um, everyone was so anomalous because of what they included, what they didn't include and the way they packaged things that it, it, the month, the dollar part wasn't, we haven't found that very useful, but, but some of the other, uh, pieces were, were quite, uh, quite useful. And then, uh, the fourth, uh, attachment you see, we asked that each city for their organizational chart and they sent org charts. And as you can see, they're, they're all organized quite differently. I suspect if we ask them right now to send another org chart, it would be quite different, just like ours is because, uh, they probably don't have that stuff anymore. But, uh, but that we don't know. Um, I think I'll, I'll leave it at that right now and ask, uh, if the other committee members want to add to what I had to say. Inga or Jim? Jim, uh, you are muted.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I just had three comments, um, two of which are related. Uh, one is that, uh, we were a little surprised, or at least I was a little surprised to find that we were one of only two cit, two libraries that had a bookmobile. So if cities our size, it's a little unusual apparently, uh, to have a bookmobile. But on the other hand, there's a lot of history in terms of why we have one. And, and I think it's a very highly valuable, valued service for a number of different reasons. But anyway, I just wanted to highlight that that's one of the reasons that we have a little more staff and a little more staffing cost is because we have a bookmobile. And also, as Marsha mentioned, uh, we have a California History Room that I think is fairly unique. And at that point, we had a full-time, uh, uh, fund development coordinator. So we had kind of three aspects that made us different than most of the other, uh, benchmark libraries. And if you subtracted out those positions related to those three programs, then our number of staff in terms of the FTEs is actually between the median and the mean of the other cities. So if, if you kind of set aside those unique programs that we have, then we be, we become right in the mainstream of these other libraries. But if you include them, both our number of staff and our staffing cost and our whole library budget is higher than the others. So it just kind of puts it a little bit of context, at least to me it did. So those were actually two issues that I wanted to mention. And the third one was, we wrestled quite a bit with the accuracy of the data that we were getting. And we found a number of discrepancies, both among the state's data that they provided and also from what the data that the cities, uh, or their libraries provided to the state and what they provided to Inga and what I found in their budgets online, because I looked at that as well. And so we've done our best to make this as accurate as possible. But I know that there, there are things in here that aren't quite accurate, even after all the work that we've done. So I wouldn't put an overreliance on any particular statistic here. I think it's useful to get a flavor of things. But different cities sometime, like some of the cities didn't include their IT costs in their library budget. And that's a, I mean, in ours, I think that's over $200,000 if I recall. So, you know, different cities and different libraries, uh, include different things in their budgets. And so anything where you make broad sweeping statements, be careful of. Uh, because there's a lot of data that even, even after all we've done, there's still a lot of apples and oranges in this data. So again, it's, it's useful and interesting, but, you know, don't, don't get too carried away with any of it because there, there may be data issues or apples and oranges issues within the data. So you just have to kind of keep that in perspective when you look at some of this data. So that, those are the only comments I wanted to add. Thank you.
Okay, Inga?
Uh, sure. So I wanted to add, one thing is the, the chart that is the profile of library benchmark cities. And that's a chart that actually, uh, our city manager had asked us to put together because he wanted to see what percentage our library was of the overall general fund budget compared to other cities. However, once we compared the general fund of other cities, um, side by side, there were a number of footnotes that we added, needed to add because it's not quite accurate to, to look at Monterey's overall general fund in comparison to the other cities. Because for instance, we, um, our general fund includes the amounts, uh, of the costs for our providing fire service to other communities. So if you were really comparing, trying to compare apples to apples, you would take things like that out. And then of course, our city has some unusual services that other cities don't have, which I think, uh, Chair Moreau had mentioned, or it could have been, uh, Vice Chair Thompson. But you know, we don't have a golf course, another city does. But we have a, a sports center and that's a very unique facility. So when you look at the, the, the budgets for the different cities, um, it's, you have to take some of that for the grain of salt. And if you really wanted to compare them, you'd have to make adjustments there. That's one thing I wanted to say. And another takeaway had to do with, um, our program attendance and the size of our building. So, uh, we saw that program attendance tended higher, the numbers tended higher in our, um, peer group, but yet they had larger buildings. And, and we know that we have to, uh, cap attendance. We've had to cap attendance at our programs. Um, because our community room has, uh, attend, uh, limits to the number of people we can have in it. So that was one thing that we realized, Adam, that probably skews our numbers because we can't have as large gatherings as other libraries can have. So those are just the two things I wanted to add.
Um, any other comments or questions from any other, other folks on the board or? Uh, now, any, oh, Bob, uh, you're muted.
Yeah, I was, I was waiting for Harisha or Jennifer to jump in. But, um, you, uh, you and Jim, well, and Inga have mentioned the things already that were most important to me, uh, out of this. I think it's an excellent document and gives us a lot of information, that isn't just apples and oranges, but like one of you said, it gives us a feel for what the Monterey library is like relative, uh, to others in our same, uh, size range and so forth. I mean, it would be foolish to compare ourselves to the LA library, for example. Um, but, uh, time after time, when we've done surveys of our patrons, we have found that their prime interest is in having, uh, a varied, a complete, a large and useful collection of materials for circulation. And that that was always their priority. And survey after survey, whether we did it or the G4 consultants did it, it didn't matter. And, uh, that I think needs to be emphasized over and over again because we are spending less on that particular aspect of our budget than our comparable libraries are. And I think that could be seen as a criticism because we're not meeting the number one request and need of our patrons. Um, I think it's an also, also I hadn't thought of it, but it's interesting to point out that while our attendance seems, uh, not as strong as our comparable libraries, uh, so too, we have so much less space than they do. And if we had bigger rooms, we had, could accommodate more people. And this is consistent with the results of the consultants of the G4. Their feasibility study was also. And, uh, you know, e- even the bare bones, um, so, part of the report that G4 did, you know, they had multiple options for all the way from tear down, build a brand new one to minimal inside modifications. They all led to the increase in, uh, space available for those kinds of things. So I think this, um, just further points that out. And the other thing that, um, was really important to me when we talk about how, how are we going to pay for stuff? And I think Jim pointed it out, uh, that none of these libraries with which we are so alike and similar, uh, charge non-resident fees as a way to try to, uh, generate income. And in fact, very, very few libraries of all sizes, small and much larger than we are throughout the entire state, charge non-resident fees, uh, for in-state users of the facility. And I, I think that's just something that we need to not forget when we're talking about, um, funding. So great job, great job. And I think there's going to be a very useful, um, uh, report with lots of, um, uh, relevant information.
Thank you. I, 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 I think it will be used as an ongoing planning tool. And, you know, whenever we come up with a question, aren't we over, overdoing it in this area? Or are we low in this area? We could come back to this report as a sort of, uh, We could come back to this report as a sort of a reality check, I think. I do want to mention that probably next month, we will be bringing our non residency report, very comprehensive report back to the board. So we'll take up that issue at at the meeting when we discuss that. Harish?
Yes. In any of these comparisons, it's just a given that since there are so many differences between libraries, we have to do some kind of a normalization. And what we should do is perhaps think about what things we want to normalize and say, these are the things that we're going to compare. And are we happy with the comparisons with those things tossed out? So we have the history room, they have something else. Where do we make the adjustments and say, okay, here's what's left? Are we happy with what's left? And is this a fair comparison between the two libraries?
In in some sense, we 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 did try to do that, but I think it it's very, very difficult. You know, we we with, you know, that does become a sort of apples and oranges. It's like the budget, well, we have a sports center, they have a golf course, you know, golf course and the sports center, we compare. It it's it's a it's a little bit tricky to do that. But I I I hear you. I understand what you're saying. Jennifer?
Yeah, mute here. It was really interesting because the report documented what my experience has been working in all different kinds of libraries and all different communities. And each library has its own unique flavor in response to community need. It makes it very, very difficult to compare one library to another library because a community need and community desire is what drives services and budget and collection development. So it was fascinating to see this because when you stop and think about it, having a bookmobile and having a California History Room is like having little mini branch libraries in addition to a regular library of the, you know, one building. So it's we're kind of unicorn. One size does not fit all. But it's it's quite interesting. And you're right, it does provide some documentation that'll help provide justification for future planning and budget requests. So thank you. This is just a Herculean effort. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other comments from from us folks? Will we we look for public comment on this?
I guess I will. I will add, just from the city manager's office, I I know both, you know, Marcia and Jim and Inga spent such considerable amount of time on this report and researching, contacting each of the other libraries and identifying which ones would be part of the comparator group, which ones wouldn't. Just very impressive work and I think will help us guide our what we do in into the future. And this is very impressive from our side.
I also wanted to mention that we're we promised to share this data with the other libraries. And so I think it will be also be very helpful for them in planning. So I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
No, no, that's that's good. And no public comment on on this item. So, yeah.
All right. You said that. Okay, we will move on to old business, which is the first item is the to revisit the proposed staff reorganization and budget for FY twenty two and twenty three that was requested by the city. And Inga, want to start us off there?
Sure. So the numbers that you see before you in this report that you see before you, basically, the the general flavor, the general recommendation that I'm providing to you is the same as the meeting that as what you saw at the meeting on the eighteenth of March with two exceptions, three exceptions. One is, is that I had forgotten in year two, we needed to budget in our supplies $2,500 for new library cards. So that brought up year two increased by $2,500. The second thing is, is trustees had suggested that I add $10,000 for on calls because it didn't look like we had sufficient coverage for absences and vacancies and that sort of thing. So I've added that $10,000 for each of the years. And then the third change is something that I had discussed with the city manager's office. The city manager had originally said, if the admin assistant position is a full time position, even though it's going to be working some hours with the museums, you really should budget the whole thing in the library. So after the meeting that we had on the eighteenth, I I went back and I I reworked the figures to make it 100% in the library. But then with subsequent conversations, since that position is providing the admin support for museums, we talked about the possibility of having it be a 75 25 split. And so the number you have before you is supposed to be, and the numbers are, the dollar amounts, is 75% of it budgeted to the library and then 25% will be budgeted to museums. That being said, on packet page forty eight, oh, maybe I did correct it.
Yes, you did.
I did. Oh, good. I had had a typo where I'd forgotten to change the numbers even I mean, the the number of FTE, even though I had changed the amount, the budget amount. But it looks like it's been corrected. Yes, good. Okay, so those are the changes from what you saw a week ago.
Comment, I think you also added, not to the budget, but the as the trustees have requested, a list of items that would be restored if in the future, if funding were allowed. And I just, I just wanted to ask if those, I don't think they're in priority order. I don't think we prioritize them.
No, we didn't. Yes.
So I think we should note that they're not in priority order because as as Bob says, since the collection is the most important thing, maybe maybe we would prioritize a hire or or something. Or we just didn't have that discussion as to what would be. So maybe you just want to put a note in that says it's not a priority order.
Okay, good.
Comments, questions? Bob?
I would like to move that the library board approved the proposed staff reorganization and the proposed fiscal year twenty two and twenty three general, library general fund budgets as presented today.
Be happy to offer a second. Okay. Okay, that I I I have one more question. And that is, so that the $10,000 we put in there buys approximately three months of replacement, right? Some give or take, right? So if it's about $20 an hour or something like that, it's about a quarter of a year. Right? I I just want, I just want to make sure that everybody feels that's enough as contingency. I mean, you don't use it if you don't need it, but I'm talking about people going out sick and everything. I just, you you feel it's enough and. Inga, yeah, oh, you're.
Really, we're looking at a really bare bones budget. And that's because from my conversations with the city manager's office and at the executive meetings, I understand that the the budget continues to be very we're in a very dire situation. And so rather than being able to increase the budget anytime soon, I see that it's more of a possibility that we might be asked to, you know, what can you do with just four days of service, you know, that sort of a question. So so I think I was really looking at it with the, you know, with this understanding that we're we're in a really terrible situation right now, but we want to reopen to the public. And so what's the bare minimum we can we can do that with?
If I could, if I could have a few, just a couple of minutes just to to share and add on to Inga and insurance city manager's offices perspective. And I I believe I shared this with all of you last week during our special meeting. Number one, we appreciate all the work from Inga's team and the subcommittee to prepare the budget. The library is one of our top priorities. We're working on identifying how do we reopen the library? How do we afford to reopen the sports center, which we've done on a minimal basis with largely part time staff? Same thing with community centers, we're we're planning and and all the other programs and services that that are important and are essential to us. One of the pieces that the Government Finance Officers Association recently provided some guiding principles on the American Rescue Plan Act. And as many of you know, we're lucky to receive a $6.5 million estimated of these ARPA funds. And it's the the fact that these are temporary funds and should be applied to non recurring expenditures is one of the the guiding principles that GFOA came out with stating that these are should be used to offset revenue declines. The funds should cover operating deficits caused by COVID nineteen, which we which has impacted the library so so heavily. And and that additional budget restraints may be necessary to achieve or maintain a structural balance in future budgets. So I without going into a lot of detail, there's there's several components that go into the what we can afford and 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 how the when you adopt this budget today, how we'll be able to take that and then build a budget and and see how that'll play with the rest of the the rest of the organization and whether it can be fully, fully implemented in in the way that we all hope it it can. And I think one of the pieces that we shared with you all last week as well is that the American Rescue Plan, we're only going to receive 3.25 million dollars in about 50 days. And the other half will receive in a year from now. And it's, again, 19% of the total revenue losses of COVID nineteen of the 34 million that we're expecting to lose due to the pandemic. And compared to Salinas, they're slated to receive $50.5 million, which we calculated is 360%, 360% of the revenue loss due to COVID. So it's the first time in in US history that local governments are receiving support. But and and we're grateful for the 6.5, but it's, again, very, very limited. So, again, one one way of saying, we we appreciate all the great work. And and I I just want to manage expectations on in terms of what we what we can do. And also that, you know, while while we hope that we're we're going to be able to take what you've approved and we we want to support support that. We we still, the numbers are still, we're still counting the numbers, still counting the the beans, if you will, to see what we can, what we can afford with the TOT funding, the TOT revenue projections, as well as sales taxes are our top two revenue generators. And we have, at least right now, are planning a budget update with our city council for a study session on March, I'm sorry, April 28th. So hopefully, at that point, we'll have a better idea, check in on where we are with the budget. And then in by May and June, we'll have a recommended final adopted budget for the entire city for the new fiscal year. So that gives you a little bit of a outside picture on how what we're currently doing, what we're working with and and what to expect in terms of a timeline in the upcoming months as as you approach approving this recommended budget.
Thank you. And understood. Okay, so we have a motion that was moved and seconded. Does anybody else have any comments before we? Jim?
Yeah, we maybe as a follow on motion, we may want to talk about at what point we'd want to have Inga come back to us if there are proposed changes to this budget. But that could be a separate motion, if you like.
Okay. Any other comments before we vote? Is there any public comment now?
We don't have public comment.
Okay. I think we vote then.
Okay, let's do the roll call vote here and going back to the list. And we'll go in reverse order and start with trustee Petty.
Aye.
Trustee Yoshi.
Aye.
Trustee Felgus.
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Aye.
And last but not least, Chair Moreau.
Aye. Okay, the motion passes. Now, let's talk about what Jim had suggested. You want to make a motion, Jim?
Well, maybe we talk about it for a minute first, because it's not totally clear to me the best way to handle this. One thing, I think, you know, it's fine if Inga and the city manager's office and the finance department need to adjust the numbers shown under the internal service charges. You know, in my mind, that's fine. I I know from experience that those numbers often change during the budget process. And I don't have any problem with that, as long as it's not changing the nature of the service. But when we get into the the staffing and the supplies and services, it's a little more complicated. I I know, you know, if if there did need to be trimming back, it might be in terms of the number of hours that we were open. It might be the staffing, it might be when we reopen. And those all have fairly different implications. And so my sense of it is, any significant changes to those maybe should come back to the board. But I'm open to, you know, any other flexibility that anybody, any other trustees or Inga might suggest or Nat might suggest for that matter, because I'm not real clear kind of where to draw a line about wanting to have it come back and talk about it further as a board of trustees.
So let let me ask a question about how these things work. Is is there a time when Inga's asked to make a change and then bring it back to the city manager's office? Is there a specific timetable for that, that we could say, well, we'd like to, as a board, check in on the if there have been changes? I don't know if I'm making myself clear, but if if, for example, she has a deadline of, you know, I don't know, April fifteenth or April 27th to to make these changes and and she's been asked to make changes, then then she could come back to us. If not, then we wouldn't be.
Well, so so what typically happens is there's the deadline for entering the numbers into the software that the city uses. And that deadline was set on March 26th. I understand it might be adjusted slightly. But then there's a, all the numbers are put together. And then you start having meetings, departments meet one on one with a a finance committee, a team. And then you're asked about various things that you've submitted. And then you find out there needs to be a reduction or that particular request hasn't been approved. And then the question is, you know, which of those, what's the tipping point at which I would need to come back to the library board? And I think before we had said, if there was a change to the staffing, you know, the positions, you would want me to come back to you and talk to you about that. You know, one of the places that's easy to cut, but of course, has a big impact on our community is reducing the collections budget, the collections budget. Because since 2004, our budget has actually been reduced by 50%. And that was partly because previous library leadership saw that it was preferable that it reduce the collection than to lay off staff. And so with the thinking that friends and foundation could help raise funds for the collection. At this point, we've already gone to the the worst scenario of having the staff laid off. So then, you know, do we want to reduce? Right now, of course, the collection budget has been zeroed out and we're trying to build some gradually build it back. But is that something that if 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 we need to make further cuts, would you want me to come back to you? If that was. would you want me to come back to you if that was an area that was threatened or not?
I think so. And, and a substantial reduction in supplies and services, I think also. Bob?
Yeah, the agenda item says that we will parenthetically vote to approve what we just did and then provide direction to staff. And I am sensing a consensus here that doesn't require a motion, but that we are directing staff to come back to us with any results from conversations with city manager or city council that would significantly reduce the budget that we have approved. And so I think our direction is pretty much what everybody's been saying, that if it looks like it's not going to fly exactly the way we have presented it, and we have presented it as a bare bones minimum. I mean, that was the, the framework within which we said we could do this, we could reopen, we could provide, you know, enough to be happy with it temporarily. And if there is a significant change to that, I think our direction, and everybody's nodding their head, is that yeah, you come back and talk to us, talk to the board.
So one, one sort of thing, thank you, Bob. One of the things that happens often once the numbers are, are submitted is that, you know, some of the salary information isn't quite, doesn't quite match up with the numbers that the finance department has. I know that there's going to be an adjustment to hourly rates for the part-time positions, for instance. So those calculations will change. And then of course, depending on the possible increases that different bargaining groups may have, there'll be some increases there. So we usually think of those as corrections or adjustments and, but those won't have a significant impact on services. They might, you know, make the, the budget numbers look different, but it's not as if that will change the number of hours that we're proposing to be open. So I would ask that, you know, as long as those are just sort of corrections. And then the, in the interdepartmental charges, there will be some corrections too, as, as ISD comes up with their, you know, final numbers. And as the, the vehicle folks come up with their final numbers for bookmobile fees and so forth, there'll be corrections.
So Inga can also, you can keep Jim and me appraised of that and we can then together decide, you know, what, what threshold requires a board meeting, I think. Awesome.
And yeah, possibly a special meeting if there, if it turns out we need to, you know, eliminate a significant amount.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that makes a lot of sense, especially with this, you know, as, as you know, this is in a typical year. And so we're, it's going to take a number of iterations and processes on our end with, with the departments and then of course with council and the community before we get to a final, biennial budget. And we also know that there are likely going to be a number of mid-year adjustments because the projections are, are just that projections. And, and so even if there's an approved budget for the biennial year, we expect to go back to, to council in, say, January or February of 2022 with another mid-year adjustment.
I had a question for you, Nat, about the April 28th study session. So on the, the calendar that I've been listing, the dates that I've been listing in, in the budget reports, I have a May 26th budget presented. And so this is the, a study session prior to the study session where the budget is presented, that will be seeking some guidance from council with some preliminary budget figures?
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't believe we'll be ready at that time to present preliminary budget numbers as much as it is a check-in on where we stand with key revenue estimates and potentially where we are with expenditures to date. So that's, that will be the focus. Less, more of a check-in. So everyone understands where we are fiscally and it's a primer, so to speak, before we go into the, the deep budget conversation.
Thank you.
It's not on the list of dates in our budget package. I mean, in our agenda package. That's April 28th for that meeting you're talking about?
That's correct. Yeah, April 28th is, is what we're planning.
So that's a interesting.
And that is, that is the city session in four o'clock and it's preliminary right now. So we're still, we believe we will have enough information to, to share at that time, but it's not set in stone yet.
Okay, so Jim?
Go ahead. I'll, I'll wait after you.
No, I was, I was kind of, I'm thinking maybe we don't need a motion about this, just an understanding perhaps. But if you want to make a motion, it's, the floor is yours.
I was actually going to go in a slightly different direction.
Okay.
So maybe we should see if anybody feels like we need a motion or we've basically, I think, have outlined some discretion to the chair and vice chair to decide whether any changes are significant enough to bring back a special board meeting. If people are okay with that.
I think that's fine.
Then the, the thing I just wanted to highlight was particularly in terms of year two of the, of the two-year budget. I just wanted the minutes to reflect that, at least I, and I think it's the sense of the board, certainly hopes that in year two, that there will be more of a financial rebound for the city and that we can actually do more in year two than what's in the proposed second year of this budget. Because year two is still very bare bones, I think. And I'm hoping that we'll be in a little better situation fiscally as a city and as a library to do more in year two than what's in this proposed budget.
Right. And, and if I might add to that, we actually discussed that at the last meeting and we have, just in case, we have a list, which is, accompanies this, a non-priority order of nine things that we would like to see happen if in fact the budget is better than we thought. So we're being optimists here, just in case the budget, the, the city's finances come out miraculously better than expected. We'll be ready with our list.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other, any other comments? Okay. We took public comment on this one already. Yeah, okay. Let's move on to item seven, which is an update from the AdHOP RFID committee.
Okay, so the update that I have is that we believe we are at about, we've tagged about 28,600 items out of a total of close to 100,000 items. So that is a very great progress. We started on the ninth of March and we have an amazing volunteer team that has been working very hard. And then we have as budgeted, we have a couple of people we've brought in to work on it as well. Couple of part-time paid folks and things are moving forward. Then regarding the contract, contract is signed. The purchase order's been submitted with the invoice and a check will be cut on March 31st. And so we hope that this is all going to bring us the carts that are the second part of tagging, which is encoding those tags. And once we have a couple of carts, then we're thinking we'll figure out how to make a few more once we see all the parts and how they work together. And the company did say we're welcome to put together some parts of our own that would then help us speed up the process even more.
Question, this is a really hard one, but do you, if you were asked to give an estimate of when this project will be done, can you, you know, not for the, not, not, not cast in stone, but?
Right. I would say, so we started on, on March 9th, I think at by June 1st.
That would be, that would be great. And, and maybe, maybe we can 3D print some of the things that we need. Now that we have for you.
Looks like Jim had a comment question.
Okay, Jim, you're muted.
Thank you. I need those reminders, I'm afraid. I just wanted to see if there was anything new in terms of Pacific Grove's participation in the RFID as a possibility?
Yes. So Pacific Grove would be happy to have us tag the materials that come to be checked out here at our library and they'll pay us for those tags. So we were hoping that they would say yes to that because we want it to be seamless from the customer's point of view, how they check materials out. So that'll, that'll be great because then everything will check out in a similar fashion.
Thank you.
That's very good. Bob, question?
I would request that, you, you said by June 1, but when the RFID process is about ready to be implemented and actually used, I would ask that you bring to a board meeting some kind of, it, it could be just a demo or a video, or you could, a website, webinar, or anything to show us what, what's going to happen once it starts. Because I, I have a vague visualization of how it's going to work and what we're achieving by investing in RFID and how it's going to be more efficient and everything. But I would, if there's some kind of short package that you could present. Like I remember Kim brought in the 3D printer when we first were starting to use it and she showed us how it worked. I'd like a similar kind of demo for the RFID, if I would.
Sure. And when I said, when I responded to Chair Moreau's question, what I was thinking about particularly was the tagging and encoding of the collection. I can't say for sure about the installation of the security gates and some of the other equipment because we haven't been able to have those conversations with our vendor until they saw that they were getting their payment. So we'll see what their timeline is for how quickly they can get those things shipped to us and installed. Yes.
Not, not just the installation and, and the tags, but also a test run to make sure it does work.
Yes.
That's not to be forgotten. So you need to have time for that if you haven't budgeted it.
And so nobody, nobody will hold the library to June 1. We can, maybe we should leave that out of the minutes. It's just a, it's a hopeful, it's a hopeful target to, to just have the, the tagging and the, and the encoding done.
Yes. And with the way our volunteers have been going, you know, we're hope, very hopeful because they've been working very hard, very diligent.
Comment, Jim?
Yeah, maybe just one last question on that. Last week, I think it was, or maybe it was the previous board meeting, we talked that it probably wouldn't make sense to try to reopen the library until the, until this project is done. But I don't know exactly what, whether that means fully done with the security gates and everything, or if it means certain parts of it are done. Have you thought that through enough to give a flavor of at what point it would make sense to open the library if the project isn't 100% done?
Well, many libraries close to the public when they are tagging and encoding their collections. So we would want that part of the project done before we reopen to the public. And then for us, of course, the second important piece for reopening is having adequate staffing. So, but as far as whether or not we would be able to circulate materials without having the security gates fully installed and some of the other equipment fully installed, we can certainly continue to circulate materials with the barcodes the way we have up until now. So that's not a barrier. But it's really getting all of the handling that we have to do of the collection really should be done without the public coming in and browsing. And then also we need to have the staff in place to reopen.
I, I think the planning, the planning committee will continue to talk about this and recommend, and recommend back. I also think that until you speak with the vendor and you have a real sense of when the rest of that equipment will be installed. I mean, if they say they can't do it until December, then we're going to have to have a workaround. But if they, you know, if it's in a couple of weeks, I, I, I think, I think we don't have quite enough information. But I, I think we also need the staff in place. So that, that is absolutely. So those, those two are separate issues, but you know, the, we'll, we'll continue to talk about that as, as, as time goes on.
It, it sounds like clearly it would be ideal to have the RFID completely installed before we reopen, if possible, right?
Absolutely.
That's the goal, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're all okay on that. Any other comments? Questions? Public comment? I guess no, no public comment.
No public comment, no.
All right. So we move on to informational reports. So Inga, I started talking about the financial report.
Yeah. So under informational reports, I think Chair Moreau had wanted to hear about wine and chocolate and how we had done there. And rather than a written report, just a verbal report. So I asked Mary Jane Perna, our interim fund development coordinator, if she would prepare some comments about how the chocolate and wine fundraising event went this year. So take it away, Mary Jane Perna.
Sure. First of all, thank you to all of you who were able to attend and participate. And also those of you who participated by going above and beyond the call of duty and donating bottles of wine to help those gift bags be as fulsome as they were. Much appreciated. The paid participant list was 80. I, you know, we can conjecture as to whether the attend, that makes the attendance having been twice that. We know of a few cases where there was a family of four watching. So, you know, I'm thinking probably 150 people or so tuned in that night and participated. The, I am not a veteran and haven't had a granular experience with the data in the past like I did this year. But as I went through all of the participants, I, to me, it was surprising, and maybe this is, happens every year, a third of the paid registrations were brand new people. So I, I, hard to know if that's larger than it generally is. We certainly had a lot, you know, quite a few people who are used to coming when it's in person didn't show up because perhaps it just wouldn't have been the same to them. But for whatever reason, we had, I'm just always heartened by the new names. Whether it's just a different breed of cat who's interested in the, and able to take advantage of the virtual experience or a result of the fact that the Friends and Foundation invested a lot more in promotional efforts with radio spots, actually that was, with radio spots and several ads in the weekly. Or whether people, I, I like to think people were at home during the pandemic having a nice long think about what they cared about. And so they were motivated to join in with this first virtual event. There were also a couple of very long lapsed donors, people we haven't heard from since 2011, who purchased tickets, registered and tuned in. who purchased tickets, registered and tuned in. So that's great. And I, I think last but not least at all, from my point of view, certainly this event is a fundraiser, but it's also in my mind, a, just a key engagement opportunity and a chance for the library to be elevated in the public eye and for our constituents to come together and engage with the material and with the less tangible, but much valued aspects of the library. And some of them are motivated to make gifts. So there was a, a longtime donor who gave a much larger gift than ever before of $1,000 and had a lot of kudos for Inga about the substance of the program, in particular, the facts and figures, so that we, in her mind, this donor's mind, did a good job of really painting the picture of what's going on in the library and what this, this experience during the pandemic has been like. So that was good feedback. The other was a, a brand new $2,500 donor who I've had a little bit of casual correspondence with and they were delighted to make this gift. I mean, it's really nice when a donor feels this happy about having made the gift. And she confided that she grew up on the peninsula. And I think based on the area code that was used to, on, with their gift reg, with their gift and with their registration at Chocolate and Wine, I think they may have moved back to the peninsula recently. But again, I'm fantasizing because I haven't really been able to meet with them yet. But just, I think, good all around. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jane. And I, you know, we wanted to thank, I think folks might have seen in the weekly that the Friends and Foundation sent out a very nice thank you to everybody who participated, who made donations. And so we're very grateful for everybody who contributed. And I think it was a, it was a good program. It was about 45, 50 minutes. And Nat did a great job with the Nat chat portion of it. So Nat has a reputation that he has to uphold for other fund events.
I really enjoyed and was honored to be part of it. So thank you for inviting me.
Okay, so for other informational reports, are we looking at the financial report and the statistics?
The next one is financial report, yes.
Okay. So you have the, I should point out that the revenue balances and the expenditure balances reports are actually, they were as of current, when they were issued, when they were run, as opposed, and they were run on the 22nd. As opposed to ordinarily, we just have them for the previous month. And that's simply because I'm still learning how to use simpler systems and pull the data out. And then, let's see, there's some unusual things about the numbers and I appreciate trustees' questions about them. One thing in the revenue balances, the revenue balances for the general fund are now negative. And I think that was just an error because I had reported that we weren't receiving the revenues we had originally projected, both for the library and for the museums. And so a correction was made to the fines line of the general fund, which was the amount for both, the total amount for both library and museums. So that is something that I've asked the finance folks to help me correct. And then in the expenditure side of things, it looks like we are running out of funds in support services and in reader services are getting very low. And that's also because the, the funds that we requested for PTS were put into different areas of the budget than those two areas. And so it's, it's all going to come out in the end, but it just, when you look at the individual lines, looks off. And then there is a third kind of puzzling thing, which is there's some charges to the library that have to do with personnel. I believe they have to do perhaps with the layoffs that I've asked the finance department to explain to me better, that some charges that have been made against the library accounts that I don't recognize previous years. So there'll be more information in the future about that. Any questions about the financial report?
Jim?
You, you've actually responded to some of the questions I've had previously, so thank you. The one suggestion I have is that perhaps the charts could be reduced before they're included in the packet because parts of it, I think, were cut off, like the percentages, percent spent, for example, at least in mine didn't, isn't on there. So.
It actually, it wouldn't print for me. Unfortunately, it, it's not cut off. It's just that, that column, I kept requesting that column and it wouldn't print out. So that's another sort of training issue for me and how to generate these reports in simpler.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so, next time. Okay, any comments on the, on that report? Nat, any public comment?
We don't have public comment on this report either.
Okay, so now we move to the statistical report. Any? Want to say anything about it?
I don't think so, but I'm happy to.
Speak for yourself.
Yeah.
Bob has a comment.
Yeah, two things. One, that you hear me comment on every single meeting when we look at the statistical report. And that is, if you look down in the program sections, you'll see that while understandably, year to year, the number of programs for adults is down by over 50%, yet attendance is up and it's over 3% more. And I think we can interpret that, or at least I do, as saying that the adults are really responding, even though it was fewer programs. And we know why that is because we were closed and all that stuff. And we're doing a lot of virtual and remote programs. Even though there were less than half as many programs, we had more people year to year actually attend them. And I think that gives us some direction for the kinds of programming to which at least adults will likely respond and how we should go about our planning in that regard for upcoming years. The other thing I noted, and this is consistent with the survey results and the G4 consultant results about what's important to our, our constituents, customer visits, down 80 some percent, but items checked out, only down 57%. So even though there were way fewer people, they valued the circulation of our collection a whole lot. And that just supports even more the belief that that's where we need to pay a lot of attention in the future.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a question about the youth programs and the programs for teens. So some of the time, we didn't have anybody doing those, or is that correct? Or we've always had?
So we have somebody doing weekly children's programs on, that are pre-recorded and then shown on YouTube. And those aren't captured in these statistics because of the definitions that the state library uses for programs. And they are, don't fall under that category. So what is captured there is we do one monthly Zoom program, a Zoom storytime for children, and Zoom does count. So the Zoom is there. And right now, we don't have anybody doing teen programs. We have somebody reaching out to the schools to offer programming to the schools for middle school and high school, but we haven't had any takers yet.
So I, I'll just to say, I, I don't think we should interpret that adults are using a library, are using the, doing the online programs much more than youth and teens because it's, part of that is the availability of the programs themselves. So we, we can't really, can't really say.
And when we've looked, it's been 37% of the circulating materials have been children's materials. So we know that children are using the library through our collections. But I, I do think that there is a question about how, how well online programs address the interests and needs of, of young children. So I think that, that as we, in the planning committee, we look at programming and bringing real, not virtual programming back, we'll probably want to prioritize for young children, having things like programs out on Colton Hall lawn, whereas we know that for adults, having a Zoom program is probably going to actually reach more people than having a program in the community room would reach with the six foot distancing restrictions and so forth.
Okay, any other comments on that?
Just, just to add, we, Inga and I have been talking about other, other options beyond just Colton Hall lawn for outdoor programming. We have a great resources, the conference center, for example, with ample space. So even though the, the programming isn't just limited to the community room, we can, I know Doug Phillips, our general manager at the conference center, is excited to be hosting as many people as, as he can within limits, of course, and maintaining COVID safety. But there are some other options like, like programs offsite as well.
Any other comments about this report? Okay, and public comments?
No public comment.
Okay, so we move on to our last item, which is trustee's comments. So we, shall we, how we, how should we do this? We'll start with trustee Felgus, if you have any.
I guess I'm kind of a glass half full gal, but I'm looking at the possibilities that we've discovered through this past year, having to deal with really extraordinary situations. But at the same time too, it's really given us an opportunity to drill down to what is truly important to the community. And obviously, the library and library services rate highly. It's also interesting too, because we're discovering different ways we might be able to continue to do business in the future. Either Zoom programs or hybrid programs, or as that was suggesting, offsite programs. So that's interesting. I guess right now, my takeaway from this particular meeting is I'm really concerned about restoring as as much as we can to our materials budget. That seems to be a real high priority for the community. And it's, it's to me really distressing that those funds have been so heavily cut. And I hope we can find a way to restore and to just keep building the collection and improving it. So, thank you, thank you. Oh, I get my second COVID injection Sunday. So in two weeks after that, I'm a volunteer.
Okay, trustee Joshi.
I've not been able to help out with the tagging project because I'm busy with some of the other boards that I work with. But I expect that next week will be the end of that and I'll be able to step in full time. So just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Trustee Petty.
Yeah, I agree with every word that Jennifer said, even starting with the idea of being a glass half full person. Except I would add to that, it's not only half full, but it's refillable. And we should look forward to having more than half in there. And ending with her comment about getting jab number two on Sunday. I had my jab number two two Sundays ago. So on this Sunday, I will have completed my two week waiting period when Jennifer is starting that. So we're both following the same lines of action and thinking. And so counterpoint to our unstable stables, we have trustee trustees.
Thank you. Okay, trustee Thompson.
Well, I would also like to echo Jennifer's comments and Bob's echo of her comments. And I also wanted to specifically thank both Nat and Kim for all the work they're doing to help facilitate these board meetings. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you. And, and I, I just want to put in another quote for how much fun RFID tagging has been. Not only, not only am I tagging, but on Saturdays, I say to my husband, let's take a walk. And he says, where should we walk to? And I said, well, let's walk to the library. What a nice walk that is. And then when we get there, I say, oh, let's go and tag a few books. So he's been a volunteer as well. And we've, we've enjoyed it very much. And we're working our way up to Jays in the fiction this week. So any of you who can come and join us, it's, it's a lot of fun. Okay, so with that, I think I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Anybody moving? Bob's, Bob is, Bob is still moving. Any second? Jennifer seconds that? We are adjourned.
Nobody commented on that.